I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. Before we begin, I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time you've given us to serve. Thank you for this city, for its residents. God, I just ask your blessing on them and on us as we make decisions tonight on this council, as they make decisions tonight concerning that will affect lives of people. God, we just ask again for your direction. Thank you for this opportunity and we thank you for it now in Jesus' name. Amen. We do have large print agendas available over here. Gina, do you have those? Are they in front of you? Okay. If anyone needs large print agendas. With that said, I will call to order this regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017, and I'll ask our city clerk to begin by calling the roll.
Mayor's House.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J Cox.
Here.
Ernest Kay.
Here. All right, thank you. Item four will not be happening tonight. Kelly, our new director, new executive director of the DSA, I was hoping she could be here, but I didn't okay her calendar like I should have. She's actually, I think, in New York for the graduation of her daughter, college graduation. So, we'll get Kelly hopefully in two weeks. I'd like for you to meet her if you don't know her and hear what she has to say. She's going to be a great addition to the Downtown Springdale Alliance and I look forward to y'all hearing from her. Item five, comments from citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council concerning something that's not on tonight's agenda, council sets aside this time each meeting. We just ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and again, understand that council won't be taking action on anything you have to bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning something that is not on tonight's agenda? Come on up, Ron.
Ron, would you like to share with the mayor?
That's okay. Actually, I was hoping if someone...
We'll work through it.
I didn't know how many words, so I printed enough progress out, so I'm sorry.
We'll work through it. We'll be all right. What is it?
I'm Ron Minett, and it's more of an observation about, I know we've had some damage down at Lake Springdale. I would like to request that until the new parking lot is rebuilt at Lake Springdale, that you ask the water department if a large pad west of Silent Grove be used as a parking lot for Lake Springdale. I don't guess if any of you went by on Sunday, but there were at least 40 cars parked on the old lot, which is downhill on Silent Grove, at the edge of the road there at that same parking lot, and at the entrance to the large pad on Silent Grove. These people had to cross the street or crawl over the fence to be able to access Lake Springdale. You have a park that people want to visit, but nowhere to park at it. For those people that park on the old lot, they have to then cross a low-water bridge that is two inches underwater and is slippery as owl excrement. I guarantee you, if you walk on it, you will have that potential. Since you expect people to cross the slippery concrete, you should also expect someone to slip and fall on this inherent danger. All you need to do is use the pad west of Silent Grove as a parking lot, letting people know where to park and clear the gravel off the walking trail on the damaged parking lot area. You can't say it's too far since exercise is what these people are coming to do. It connects to the trail, as you can see on those pictures, so no work is required to connect up there. You just need to clear the gravel off the old area, the new parking area. And finally, if by some chance, I understand the 375,000 is going to come from FEMA, if it doesn't come from FEMA, perhaps use this lot long-term. I know as a taxpayer, I would prefer that you use, not use my tax dollars to rebuild an area that will be more than likely damaged again. Just because it was a 100-year flood, according to USGS, does not mean that it won't happen again soon. It just means that you have a 1% chance of it happening again this year. We have had two 100-year floods in the last five years. The last one was on August 8th, 2013. So, thank you all very much. If you all would think about that, I would appreciate it because those people don't have any place to park. They're parking wherever they can and it is dangerous to walk across that street around those corners. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. We will look at that. I didn't know how accessible that pad, that blacktop pad is to traffic right now. Is there a road to it?
There's, if you drive down to Silent Grove, there's a fence that they put up just to keep people from pulling there, but you go through that gate and you turn left about 40 feet. You can see on those pictures, it's attached to the trail. The trail goes further west, right there.
Right. Well, and that's closed until that's repaired.
Yes, well, yes, but it's underneath the, under Silent Grove Bridge. It's not closed and it's just a matter of moving some of that gravel. If you go out there and look, the creek moved about 60 feet.
We've got to redirect the creek. There's a lot of work to be done out there. But we're confident FEMA will be involved. But we'll build the parking lot back and probably until we can get it built back, we even met on that today, we'll at least get it cleaned up and get base down where people can park on the gravel.
Yeah, but even if that takes, you know, two months, that's still people, this is the busy time of the summer. These are when people are going to go, so thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, the approval of minutes. You've had an opportunity to look over those. If there are no changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Council moves.
Second. Okay, we have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? All right. Item seven, procedural motions, which we've done for years. Just wanted to throw that in. Right. What's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, options A and B. Roll call, please.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Does it mean we vote under duress, mayor?
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J Cox.
Yes.
Here's eight zero, and that's for this meeting only.
That's right.
For this meeting only. He mumbles under his breath. He's a...
Item eight, Finance Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Well, I wasn't there, so if anybody else wants to take that one, I appreciate it.
I think Councilman Lawson took that, didn't you, Mike?
I did take that. I was a couple of people that night. Finance met last week. There was one item that was recommended for approval. It was a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for a postage machine. And I honestly don't remember all the details about that.
Okay. Denise Wyman's not here tonight, and if you have questions, Denise might know more about that than anyone since it's in her office.
Resolution passed.
It's for all the city departments.
It's less expensive than the current...
We had a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All right, Denise.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes, ma'am.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
All right. Item nine, Police and Fire Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Rick Culver.
Unfortunately, I wasn't there that night either.
Were you Rick too?
I was Rick as well.
Thanks, Mike.
Fire and police met and we had one item, a resolution recommended for approval, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for professional services, and I'll let you speak about that, mayor.
All right, I'll give a little set to it and then Roy Decker from Duval Decker is here and some of his team, and he'll introduce those folks, but I'm pleased to have him here tonight. We, this was forwarded with a recommendation for approval, just mostly for, you all know all this, but just for our folks that may be watching. Springdale has, the city of Springdale has received a design excellence grant from the Walton Family Foundation for the design of a new municipal building, a police department, a criminal justice building actually, that will house the police department, the city attorney's office, our district court, and IT. And also included in this, in this project will be the renovation of this building and then that will allow, that will allow space for our other departments that are not currently in this building to move into one location. This is also, I believe, in keeping with the downtown master plan, this project, the actual construction, we hope, would be paid for with a bond issue that we hope to bring forward either late this year or next year. That's your call, but you know that throughout this summer, especially summer and fall, we're going to be working hard because that bond issue will have many different ballot opportunities, infrastructure, this criminal justice building, parks, fire stations, possibly an animal shelter. I believe, I would certainly support that and we're doing some work to bring that plan forward so that you can at least have more, have better information to consider that. But the criminal justice building is, it's a real blessing and a gift to have a building of this scope, a project of this scope, the design paid for. And we went through a process of interviewing, actually, by the time it got to us, and by us, I mean the committee, on that committee was myself, Councilman Culver, Wyman Morgan, Patsy Christie, Chief Peters, Captain's Gamble, and Hudson, Derek Hudson. So, we interviewed, brought four architectural design firms in from around the country. We had design firms from New York City, from San Francisco, from Minneapolis, and from Jackson, Mississippi. And they were all great firms. Really, it was a very good process, but the clear choice was Duval Decker from Jackson, Mississippi. And as I said, Roy Decker is here tonight. We are ready to get started. He was here today and we've already had meetings and talking about scheduling and timelines and deadlines. And so, Roy, why don't you come up? And Gail? And Roy, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you, kind of let the council get to know you and your firm.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Thank you for inviting us to participate in your community. We are honored to go through the process and we are deeply honored and moved and challenged to help you with this criminal justice facility. So, our firm is the lead firm. Height Jackson, here in your area, is represented by Gail Shepherd, who is here with me. They're our local partners. We also have other members of our team from your community, so it's really, we are from Jackson, Mississippi. That's a good thing because we understand how to build within a budget. We also know how to make really great civic buildings that communities are proud of, that serve as a legacy for your community. And we have got, coming to know Springdale and feel a real connection to your community, to the quality of your citizenship, your citizens, and all that you hope for through the master plan. So, we are very excited and honored to be here and help with this very important building. Public safety is, public safety is of the most and highest importance for your citizens in your community and we hope to help make a great project. We have specialists to serve those needs that we've brought together on the team that are the best in the country at designing police stations and court facilities. So, we think we, what I like to say is that design is not just about what something looks like. It's getting the right team together, it's getting organized, and working with our clients to help jointly make a great building. So, we look forward to working with you throughout the process. We are good at bringing projects in under budget, but we also know at a project like this, we are anxious to get our construction manager on board as well. So, we've had a good conversation about the timing for that partnership and that skillset to join your project early on. I think you all will talk about that more.
Right.
We're honored to be here and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I didn't say much about our firm, but...
Okay. Any questions for Roy or Gail?
No, mayor, but I think it would be beneficial if you would explain like you did at the committee meeting. Our resolution says that we're committing to 3,250,000, but as I understand it, what we're committing to is the initial design phase. You might explain that like you did at the committee meeting. I think that's very important because it could get misconstrued if you don't explain.
Okay, that's a good point, Mike. The design, we've worked with, we worked with Walton Family Foundation and now we're working, we've worked with Duval Decker to separate the design into two phases. The first phase being a more conceptual phase, preliminary phase, much less money than Phase Two, but that way we're, but what we're hoping to do is, what we will do is have all the preliminary design, the basic, the elevations, the general pictures, concepts, what the building will pretty much look like. A lot of that will be done in the Phase One, so that we'll have that ready, so that our residents, when we ask them to vote on this bond issue, will have good information, will have good cost estimates, we'll know what to ask for, for that portion of the bond issue. Again, and I'm going to say this every time I talk about our bond issue, it does not involve any tax increase for our residents. But the bond issue has to be divided up, that big pie of revenue that will be generated by this bond issue will be divided up in infrastructure and those other things I've already mentioned. And so, it's important that we have good estimates of costs so that we know, so that residents know what they're going to be voting on. But if the bond issue for some reason wouldn't pass, then the Phase One is what we're out and the Walton Family Foundation will, I believe, work with us on paying for that.
Would you explain, because you did at the committee meeting, you explained what our total exposure would be on the preliminary design phase, and as I understood it, we actually, that's going to be covered by the Walton grant, is that not correct or not?
I, Wyman, in his discussions with the Walton family, believed that that will be covered. I believe it will be too, but I'm still, Ernest, is that your understanding?
That's mine, for Phase One.
For Phase One, and Roy, you remember what the amount is on that Phase One?
400 and...
400 and something thousand?
407 or 400 and, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we believe there's no exposure to the city.
And that's why I thought it was important to bring forward in case that, yeah, it's 482, 592.
But of course, we're all going to work together to get this bond issue passed and so all these great things can be done for the city of Springdale. But looking forward to the process. It's a great firm. We're going to have a building that not only our police department and those other inhabitants of the building can be proud of, but our whole city can be proud of, and we're really looking forward to moving through this process. So, before you tonight is the resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for professional services.
Hope the resolution passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in several seconds.
Pretty weak.
Any other questions or comments while we have, you're going to see, you're going to see Roy and Gail both a lot over the next several months. We do have a lot of work to do.
No, he just said he's passing the baton to Gail. She's going to do all the work. He collects the money.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's good that we're getting the design work done on this because it can only help us as other cities may be passing bond issues, the construction will heat up and the cost will be that much more, and if we're ahead of the game, we're likely to save some money on that building.
That's a good point. This is a big deal and we're very thankful to have it. So, okay. No other questions? I'll ask Denise to call a roll.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Council, mayor, and to the citizens of Springdale, we are honored to serve and we will involve you all in this design process, and we mapped out a schedule today that will keep you all plugged in pretty carefully, so it'll happen fast.
That's right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Have a great night.
Ready to get to work. All right, thanks. And as Roy was saying that, I thought just be on the alert that to meet the timelines and the schedules, there may be some special, not special council meetings, but we may want to call an extra committee meeting along the way this summer to spend, to be able to devote just to this project. Because we want...
What committee are you referring to?
It would be a committee of the whole, or we could put it on police and fire, however we want to do it. Or finance, but it's probably police and fire or a committee of the whole. It'd be the kind of meeting that, where we actually get into the nuts and bolts and talk about design and are shown options and y'all get to weigh in on that. We want everyone to be very involved in that. And after that, certainly our citizens will also have several opportunities for public input. All right? Thanks, y'all.
Thank you all.
All right. Item 10, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning.
My iPad's stuck. It can't seem to read the rest of it. It's been trying all afternoon, so maybe it's just tired. It'll be okay, we can get it from here. The first item is a rezoning request for property owned by First Security Bank. It is a 4.38 acre tract located at the southeast corner of the intersection of East Robinson and Oriole Street. The request is to rezone the property from C2 to MF16. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Medium Density Multi-Family Residential District MF16 and declaring emergency. And the ordinances we have tonight all have projects that are ready to report with them. That's why they have an emergency clause.
Hope the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Any further questions or discussion? Anyone in the audience?
What's the, what's our planning map show for the zoning on East Robinson?
On East Robinson? There are some areas that are shown as commercial development and some areas that are backed up to that with multifamily. There's multifamily out in this area, just on the other side of this property, there's multifamily back there too.
On the east side?
On the, well, it actually fronts onto Orchard Street, not onto this, on the other side of the street.
That's what I mean, but to the east of this property is where the multifamily is? Those Orchard Street runs...
Orchard has that, and right, and this will be the property that backs up to it. It actually fronts on Oriole Street. The property on the other side of Oriole Street is still A1. It hasn't been rezoned.
Is the, is the multifamily go all the way to Robinson on Orchard Street?
On Orchard Street it does, and it has a medical clinic on the corner. This one, they're proposing to put multifamily all the way to the corner with two access points.
Will it have access going on to Robinson from this?
No, no. All the access to that will be off of...
From Oriole?
Will be from Oriole Street, correct. And an MF16 zone, they have to, the maximum density they can get in there is MF12 unless they meet certain criteria to expand it. We're going to get 12, I think is, how many units this is, 12 or 13, with adequate open space to go with this. And these are...
12 per acre?
12 per acre. Can't get 16 unless you add those additional amenities, so they're coming in under. So, as I told the Planning Commission, the assurance that we have with this, if we rezonate to MF16, if this project doesn't go forward, the next one can't get to 16 unless they can meet these additional amenities to make it. And so, we're not really increasing the density than what it is on the other side, on the backside of this project too. It will have two access points, open space between the buildings. We saw the design of the, you know, and we're not rezoning it specifically for that project. Remember, we're rezoning it for whatever you consider to be the worst thing that could happen, then that's what's there, but this is multifamily. 12 is the most they could get into it, just meeting minimum standards too, so.
Any questions?
And the other side, those projects got in because multifamily was allowed in a C2 zone, so we took that out. That's why it's not, they couldn't just go ahead and do it with the current zoning, so.
What do you think about the appropriateness of taking MF16 all the way to the highway?
I don't see a problem with the way this is laid out. You know, we're saying no access to 412 and it's far enough south that it won't create a problem with the intersection. We already looked at all that kind of stuff with this layout.
The clinic, the clinic you talked about, is that on the east side of Orchard's or the west side?
It's on the west side of Orchard.
It's on the west side of Orchard, right there on the corner.
Okay, so it's that 2195.
Right.
So, the 2135 is, is it multifamily?
Oh, that's the, that's the clinic.
That's 2135 is the...
Oh, that's the clinic.
Melissa, can you, can you start this slideshow and make it easier so it's easier to read?
That's the clinic. I didn't know which side of Orchard's the clinic.
Yeah, it makes it a little bit easier to see there. You don't have to look, yeah.
Okay.
Side of Orchard.
Yeah.
The east side of Orchard, there's an assisted living. That's what that big complex is, there is an assisted living place.
Right, and I was talking about at 412, at Robinson.
Yeah, and then there's multifamily that's south of that, and then the other side of the street has the similar type townhomes that this is going to have.
Okay.
Similar type project.
Other questions?
That's either where it does come up to 412. What's the distance off of the highway? And will there be fencing there?
Okay, I didn't bring the large scale with me because all we're talking about is the rezoning of whether the highest and best use is MF16, so I can't tell you those numbers off the top of my head. I can go upstairs and get it if you want to see it.
Has the large scale been approved?
The large scale has been approved, right.
I mean, I'd just like to know if there's going to be something to protect, you know, small children playing in the background or something from running out of the...
These will all face out onto Oriole Street with the parking in the rear, and so you'll have some of the parking spaces and there is some open space to add on, and it'll have to be adequately screened and it'll have to be adequately, safety fences are, I can't imagine that not happening. Now, to tell you exactly what it's going to look like, again, I'd have to go look at the large scale to see that.
How many units are we talking about?
50, 50 units? I think it's, I think it's 50 units.
How many bedrooms does that make? Are they two bedrooms? I'm just asking.
I can't tell you. I think most of them are two-bedroomed. There again, that's a, that's a condition of the large scale, not of the rezoning, so if we, if we need to have those answers, then I have to go upstairs. But keep in mind, we're rezoning it for 16 units and the amount of open space is based on the number of bedrooms, so we've gone through all those calculations to make sure that we have all that.
I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting. Was there any concern about that not being commercial up to Robinson?
We didn't have any concern expressed at the meeting, no.
Okay. Roll call.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes. Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a little bit different of a type of rezoning request. If you will remember, we approved a planning unit development for a subdivision on, on South Butterfield Coach at 3300 Butterfield Coach Road. This was a project that was being submitted to the Arkansas Development Finance Authority for tax credits to build on this piece of property. It was units that have garages. We worked out all the details of that. We have a, a development plan that goes with it. It's all to be owned by one development company. They manage everything. They mow all the yards. They take care of that. They have one on site. They have a building that has amenities that go with it. The only change that we're talking about today is to take out that phrase in their management plan that says rental rates to be less than comparable homes because of the use of tax credit through the Arkansas Development Finance Authority. The people who proposed this project didn't get financing, and it's being moved to a different developer, but they're willing to take all of the same conditions. They are just not applying any of those tax credits. So, to keep from having any confusion about whether or not this, this PUD met all of its requirements in the development, we are amending the development plan to take that statement out. Again, the statement reads rental rates to be less than comparable homes because of the use of tax credits through the Arkansas Development Finance Authority. Planning Commission reviewed this and recommends approval of the amended request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning orders of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by modifying the ordinance to remove rental rates to be less than comparable homes because of the use of tax credit through the Arkansas Development Finance Authority and declaring an emergency. Only thing that's changing in this whole project.
One more time, so then the rental rates will be less than comparable homes, correct?
The rental rates will be with comparable homes, not less.
Yeah, that's what's being taken out, yeah.
That's why I keep reading this, and it looks like it's less.
No.
But they will not be less than comparable homes.
Right, right. We're taking that out of it because they didn't get the tax credits.
That's where I couldn't get to, to make sure that was the, it's confusing.
It's terminology used by Arkansas Finance Department or whatever it's called, Arkansas Development Finance Authority. That's their terminology that had to be in the development plan itself so that they could use those tax credits, and a certain number of units had to be used as part of that to get those tax credits.
Yeah.
So, we're taking all that out. It will be a standard development with the same conditions for the type of construction, the type of facilities, the management structure, the amenities, the everything that we approved before. Just no units will have rental rates that are less than the comparable homes because of tax credits.
Okay.
What do you call it, Mike? Title eight or something like that?
Section eight.
Section eight?
No, it's not the same thing.
This isn't, this isn't section eight. This is a different wrinkle altogether. But before, that's exactly what these folks were going for, was section eight housing.
Right, and now they're not going to have that.
It's, no, it just says, they, they could have section eight, it's not required. But that's a different animal than what this is talking about.
But setting up this tax credit didn't even guarantee them the use of section eight anyway. They have to qualify that.
They still have to qualify, but that was their rationale for doing it to start with. It doesn't, doesn't mean that they don't, they won't have units that will actually qualify. It's just that they're, that's where I was having my hangup on the way they were, the way it was worded. I was afraid Patsy had written this, so I was really concerned about it.
Was there a downside to this?
I don't know what the downside would be. We've raised the level of the apart, of the complex by taking that out of it. And we still have the same quality of construction we had, garages, management structure, the whole nine yards that we had before.
Actually, actually will mean probably that there will be many less section eight houses, if any, in there compared to what it was before, and that's where I had my big problem with this the first time around, why I wouldn't support it.
The, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to move this ordinance pass.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Jim.
The, Patsy, I remember when we, when we brought this through the first time, we were talking a lot about the flooding and stuff. They were supposed to handle all that drainage, take care of that. What I don't remember is Julio. On, I know they have one entrance off of Julio into one part of this PUD.
They are required to do the street improvements in accordance with the master street plan, the width of the property that they have across that, and they know that. That hasn't changed.
But that's very little property.
Well, it's actually, well, if you look on Julio from that yellow line all the way over, as they develop both phases, they have a pretty good amount.
And they were.
Stand that, what I'm getting at though is from that yellow line where, where it joins Julio to the highway or is, or to the main street is a long ways. And that's a narrow, not very well asphalted road.
Well, but that was not a condition of the approval of the original PUD, that they had to do offsite improvements to prove that, because they do have a second access on the Butterfield Coach Road too.
And they were going to have to make, make some substantial retention ponds on there.
Yeah, there's, there's the drainage issue. There's a lot of water.
Because of the, the, the potential damage to downstream.
I'm concerned about Julio, you know, I mean, it's going to, I'm afraid it's going to get torn up right there in that area.
Well, and we had the discussion, if, if that is not used as their construction access, so we don't get it torn up with trucks and stuff going in there, that's, that's a start, you know, and I think we can do that as part of the construction requirements. But traffic, you know, at least it has two access points. We didn't make the subdivision on the north side do any improvements to Julio Road because they don't have any access to it, so we missed out getting that developer to pay that half of the street because they didn't have access to it. Or we would have had half of the street all the way down to Butterfield Coach approved on the north side, but that was a waiver that was granted by the council not to have to do that side, so.
Any other questions? Take a nice.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am. Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause carry eight zero.
Okay, the next item is a rezoning request to rezone 1.43 acres owned by Dean Houseley or the Commercial Computer Services located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Don Tyson Parkway and what is now Dean George Boulevard, at the time it still said 56th Street, but that will get changed in the future. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning order of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
Would the ordinance pass?
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion about this rezoning? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a conditional use at 990 West Sunset. This is our first time of using a conditional use for a eating place as a 17B. The applicant is requesting the ability to have karaoke at this location with hours of operation on Saturday through Thursdays from 8:00 to 10:00, from Friday to 8:00 to 12:00, and on Saturdays from 8:00 to 1:00. Melissa, can you go to the next one, please? I think this is a really good location where that change in the ordinance affects because now it backs up to residential along that street. It allows him to provide that entertainment without opening the rezoning request to a zoning classification like a C5 that allows other uses that might go in at that location. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use, and this is where my iPad only still just has the title to the resolution. So, the resolution reads, a resolution approving a conditional use at 990 West Sunset Avenue as set forth in ordinance number 4030 with the conditions that it be for karaoke only in those hours of operation that I just mentioned. And I think that's what's in your ordinance, though. I can't seem to get that to come up on my, my iPad doesn't like it for some reason.
I remember you putting that in there, and I moved that resolution pass with those conditions.
Okay.
And they still have to comply with the noise ordinance, so they're, and they're aware of that, particularly since it abuts the residential area.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Take a nice.
Watson?
Uh, yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer? Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver? Yes.
Carry's eight zero.
The next item is a waiver request for street improvements in connection with a non-large scale, which is in 1706 and in 1707, for Alderson, a fourplex on the east and west sides of, is it Aaron Place? Okay, this is kind of a unique situation in that this subdivision, when it was approved, the subdivision plan itself says that when these two lots are to be developed, the developer is responsible for doing improvements to Emma Avenue. And I think that was specifically discussed when this subdivision was approved. Unfortunately, Mr. Alderson was not told that when he bought the property, and it's on the plat. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the plat or not, but it's, it's a recorded plat. It's on the plat nonetheless, and he's asking for waiver of street improvements to Emma Avenue. Planning Commission really struggled with this one. At first, we left it that it was going to come to you guys with no recommendation, and then I think we went ahead and had a, a vote on the actual, and the waiver was denied. But basically, this comes back to you all to decide whether or not. My question was, since it's recorded on the plat, can the waiver be granted? And I, Ernest, I don't know if, if you guys talked about that in your office of what, what that happens, but it's actually a note on the, on the plat, whether or not a, oh, you and?
No, she didn't, but I.
She didn't? Okay.
I would be skeptical of amending a plat in that fashion.
And that was the requirement when Matthias brought it in, I believe, and that was the, that's why the real struggle was born.
And I think it was a conscious effort on their part. They weren't, they don't, didn't intend to develop those two lots, and so you could put it on the plat.
Yeah, they didn't care. They wanted to get the, the others in, but that was a, that's definitely on the plat, and that's part of the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, it's part of the plat, it's part of the ordinance. The question is, could they replat it and take that off? Then all the property owners in the subdivision have to agree to that replat, so I don't really know. So, we kind of left it up in the year, and I guess it's kind of up to what the city attorney tells us as to what we can do with that.
I don't think we can. I was, I wasn't aware that it was on the.
I'm sorry, I.
Plat like that.
What does it say on the plat?
Lots, one in 16, street improvements will be required to Emma Avenue when those properties are developed. That's the note on the plat itself.
So, basically, when they were wanting that rezoned or whatever it was, that was part of the requirement to, to allow the rezoning?
That was their.
No, that was a part of the requirement of the final plat of that, that subdivision.
That was their tradeoff in order to get the, the multifamily zoning in.
And to not have to do it then.
Right, and create two lots that could be sold in the future.
Because they knew they were going to sell them in the future.
Well, I can't tell you that that was their game plan at the time, but it.
Right.
Kind of has that appearance.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of has that appearance.
Kind of reminds me of a situation we ran into off of Palisade several years ago.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, indeed.
I don't, I, I think if they want to amend the plat, they're going to have to go through that process instead, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think, we can't do it, I don't believe.
I think that's unfortunate, but I think that we're kind of caught in a bad situation. Would they be allowed to do payment in lieu of improvements for those two lots so that that could be done in the future? I don't, I don't even know if that's an option, but I.
I think the safest thing for them to do is table this and then see if they could make a change to the plat, because we couldn't, we can't, I don't think we can make an action.
And Sarah hasn't sent anything to me, Ernest, so I don't know if she found anything else out after that night. I haven't seen anything.
That's.
I'm sorry, I should have asked you today, and I didn't think about it until I got down here.
We've had a few other things.
Yeah, there's been a few other things going on.
So, if, if it were not in the plat, we would just be waiving it? We don't, we wouldn't pay payment in lieu of?
The plat's part of the ordinance. Passed at the time, we'd have to do something with that ordinance.
And we have done others where notes had to be replatted to take them off. I mean, that's our final way of making sure those development occurs.
Let's, let's allow some comment here.
That's okay.
Nathan Street with McClellan Engineers. David Alderson is here in the audience tonight. He did speak with, I believe her name is Sarah from Mr. K's office. Her, their verbal discussion, from what he has told me, was that it was not a legally binding.
I'm sorry?
He said didn't have, take any legal action to do it.
No legal action required.
Well, if there's a note on the plat, then you would have to amend the plat. I don't think they can override, I don't think this council can override the note that's on the plat. I apologize, it had never been presented to me, so I didn't know.
Just trying to aid the discussion.
Sure, sure. So, I, I like the idea of tabling it and let us take another look at it.
I think that'd be wise, and then that way you could give them some real clear direction and, and.
Well, what if, what if they go through all that trouble and then we decide not to waive it?
Well.
Well, Jeff, one of the questions, if it's on the plat itself, wouldn't you read it completely before you actually finished, completed your purchase? Would you not read every piece of the document before you've completed the purchase, knowing full well that there could be some note on there that you might have missed?
Not, not always are all the, the details revealed on the, on the deed and on the contract that you get involved with. That can get a little, little murky, but I, I think it's possible to clean it up and do it, but I, I don't think we can.
Well, my question though is, would we waive it anyway? Even if it was not a plat issue, would we waive that, those improvements?
Well, that, that's something else to be addressed, because after, after that's, that is.
Well, that's my point, can we not give him some guidance? He may not, if we're telling him no, we wouldn't waive it anyway, then.
No, I think we can just explain that the options at the time would be either waiving it or payment in lieu of, or a bill of assurance. And if we did the bill of assurance, if the city didn't take action, and typically, we set it up for five years or 10 years if the.
What are we doing, the rest of the improvements down to Emma Avenue out?
We haven't done anything with them.
Bill of assurances or anything?
Uh, we did.
Yeah, we've done.
Anamac, we did a bill of assurance.
Yeah, we've done a bill of assurance. Yeah, we've done a bill of assurance. If we do a bill of assurance, then if nothing, if the city doesn't take action within a reasonable period, say a five-year period, then he's not out anything. And all the bill of ass...
We haven't taken payment in lieu of, as far as you know, anything out there?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Just bill of assurances?
Yeah.
If I may, we've also discussed, my client and I, an option of providing sidewalks and dedicating any right-of-way if they may, that may help.
That would, that would certainly help when it comes time to, you know, look at the bill of assurance or, or requiring the improvements, but that still doesn't get us over the first hurdle that we got, which I think is important to, for his sake, to get cleared up because I think he got shined.
So we could table it and let you confirm with Ernest or whoever...
What can or cannot be done?
With the, with the plat.
Yeah.
And then, uh, do you wanna go ahead and get that straightened up? Or if you feel like you don't need to get that straightened up, you can come back at the...
Yeah.
At another meeting.
But it, it would be safer, I think, to go ahead and table it. That way, you know, you're, you're not out and you don't take the chance of just going down with nothing right now. Because at least this opens it up where you've got an opportunity to salvage the deal, I think.
We need a motion.
I'd, if, if your client...
We would request to table it.
I'd, I'd make that motion then if that wouldn't, if that's not a problem.
Yes sir.
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, thank you.
Be the next, uh...
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be the next meeting. It'd be three weeks from tonight. We've got an extra week this month.
But give you, give you time to see what you can or cannot do with it.
I was gonna say though, how long does it take to do what we think he needs to do?
Well, the first hurdle, they're gonna find out if they, if it's, if action's required at all, period. That's what they're gonna, that's what this breathing time gives them, the opportunity to see. And then that, that opens up a whole new ballgame, whether it can or cannot be done.
To amend the plat. Have to be a plat amendment, wouldn't it?
Yes. Because the plat's part, part of the, gotta amend the plat and then amend that ordinance because it's, that plat was part of the ordinance.
So do we need a motion to table it though Ernest?
I move.
I think we've got one.
I'll circuit it.
Okay.
Good move.
All right. No further discussion? Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer. Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
April to June thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, item eleven, I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, Ernest Kate.
This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. Properties located at twenty-five oh three Gamar, thirty twenty-eight Orchard, and sixteen eighteen Theodore.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there anyone here to speak to any of these properties that the city attorney just read off? Gamar, Orchard, or Theodore? Okay. Seeing none, back to the...
I've got a question.
Okay.
On the one on Gamar, I was looking at the pictures and I'm trying to, understanding on that. It's like the lien was thousand nine dollars and twenty-four cents. I was looking at the pictures and I'm not, not really seeing issues where they're in the before pictures.
Let me get to it. Page John Colby.
Forty-six of ninety-nine. Fifty, okay, fifty and fifty.
Yes. Fifty's the before, uh-huh.
Guess the other question I've got on this is, some of these are intention, some of these look like they're in the, the backyards. Now we've, a couple of weeks ago at committee, it was brought up, some of the things on that memo, we've changed that. And I was just, just wanting clarification on that because I know some of these are in the backyard. And I know that we said we weren't going to do backyards unless they were complaint-driven, but, and then on that memo says stop all abatements except tall grass and weeds.
This is March second on, the one on Gamar. Was that not before we made that change?
Mm-mm.
And I, and...
I think it was, actually.
Misha's not here, but, but they could've very well gotten administrative search warrant on this one too, but I don't know.
But you're right and that's, that's what we're supposed to be working under is that it has to be able, it has to be visible from city right-of-way, uh, unless it's in response to a complaint. But I don't remember the exact date we changed that. I'm sorry, I don't remember. But I think it was after...
I think this was before...
Yeah, I think it was after March second.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And, and all this is done by city employees, right?
Yes.
Sometimes we show sixty-sub dollars an hour for employees and sometimes thirty-five, sometimes forty-two?
I don't know, we'll have to find out why there are different rates.
Because this...
Different employees.
This shows a one-hour abatement and then its cost per hour is forty-six oh seven. We don't have any employees in the city making forty-six dollars and seven cents an hour.
Would that not include equipment plus staff time?
No, because it's thirty-five dollars for a one service truck, thirty-five dollars for a one-ton work truck, uh, temporary labor cost, and then employee labor cost. And equipment cost per hour, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, plus their mobilization fee. I'm just, just asking, that, because all of them will show an hour and sometimes it's sixty, sometimes forty-five, sometimes thirty, I'm just, I'm just curious.
How many employees?
I'd like to volunteer for cleanup if we were gonna pay sixty-four dollars an hour.
I'd like to see you do it.
Part of that may depend on what jobs they pull them off of, Mike. Go ahead, Melissa.
I just wanna clarify, um, we, the third week of March is when we instituted those changes.
Okay.
So anything before that, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Paige, did you see those prices?
Okay, just flip through, let's see.
Not all in one area?
No, no, it's on different ones. Here's this...
And I, and I will tell you that we're in the process now of changing the way we charge because of some concerns, uh, with our mobilization fee from the court.
Yes.
So we're, we're changing, we're, we're gonna, we're in the process now of changing so that we list equipment, we list employee, uh, the employee rates, and we know, we'll, we won't do a mobilization fee anymore. We will figure as close as we can actual time. The issue is that there's also a cost of pulling them away from work.
Sure.
That, that we, so, but it, it's, we're trying to figure out a system where that it's more consistent and easier to understand.
And I think that, that's important for folks to understand. This is, this is issues that were in process in the past.
Right.
And we're trying to clean it up now, but you have instructed the, uh, the department to operate under your new memorandum of guidelines.
Right.
It, it looks like in looking at this that there were two employees, if you look at page fifty, for example...
Well, sometimes there's two and then sometimes there's one.
And I think that, that thirty-two eighty-two is for two employees, not for one.
Well, what it says, one employee...
Look on page fifty, it shows the names of the employees.
Right.
Their rate. And the next page, it shows employee cost per hour, but I think that's for two employees, not for one.
That does add up, uh, if you add sixteen fifty-eight and sixteen twenty-four, that does add to thirty-two...
So we're paying our cleanup people sixteen bucks an hour?
You still interested in doing it over there?
One of them there was making twenty-seven something an hour.
Getting closer.
Overton's still interested.
Okay. When we get that new, uh, process codified and in place, we'll, we'll be sure you're aware of that. So, uh, and how we're going to be handling, since we're not going to do, we're going to end the...
Mobilization fees and...
Yeah.
Well, it's, and that's all folks are hunting for is just feel like they're getting a fair shake.
Well, in some cases it'll make it go up and in some cases it'll make it go down, so, but we'll... Okay? Any other questions on the motion before you? All right, Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Second.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, great. Any comments from department heads? Yes, Melissa?
I just wanna remind everybody that Murphy and May has been rescheduled for this Friday at six PM, so we hope everybody comes out and, and celebrates the reopening of Murphy Park.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything to tell us about the damage to Murphy Park?
Well, um, we don't know if it was a tornado or straight line winds, but there were several trees down and some broken, just the tops broken, broken out. I, I drove by late, not long before council tonight, and, uh, they've gotten, looks like most of it cleaned up and hauled out.
What about the pool?
The pool sustained damage to some temporary awnings, the, the awnings that were up, the cloth awnings, and to some of the fencing on the south side of the aquatic center. Uh, I noticed the fence is back up. I don't think it's fully repaired yet, but it's, it's working.
It's not gonna delay the opening though, is it?
It shouldn't delay the opening of the aquatic center. No, they, they expect to have it ready. So, and we're gonna have our park celebration Friday night. We'll, it, it'll, uh, be a little brighter, a little more sunshine during the days for a while, but minus a few trees, but we'll, we'll replant trees and it, uh, get it looking good as soon as we, as soon as possible. So, um, any other comments from council?
Remind everybody that our new Sam's store opens Thursday morning at eight o'clock in the morning.
You betcha. Yep, some Sam's Club. Y'all like those signs?
I do.
Boy, don't those signs look good? Those are part of the overlay district that y'all approved and, uh, those requirements for those sign, that signage, I think it's gonna be great. Looks, looks better for real than it didn't in the pictures. So, Ernest, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Uh, I, go ahead, go ahead, Colby.
On the, uh, and I'll make this real brief on this, um, but, but on this code enforcement deal, can, can we get a subsequent memorandum that shows what we did change? Because I know there's some things on there that we, we were gonna do and then when I had talked to Misha, I think some of that had changed. I know that Councilor Reed had brought up at the committee meeting, uh, that there was, there was something, oh, it was taping the notices to the door.
Putting the notices on the door. That was Sam's original idea, was not, was to no longer leave notices. I actually changed that because I don't know, if you can't find anybody at home, I don't know how else you notify them. So we've gotta have the ability. We can't say, now, I think, I think it's fair to say that we need to make every attempt to actually talk to somebody, but, and I'm not sure that's, that was always being done, uh, but it needs to be done. But to say we're no longer going to attach a notice to the, to the structure, I, you tell me how else we are gonna deal with that if you've got a, if you've got a property owner, if you, you may have an empty house, you may have a property owner who's, uh, who's out of state, you may, you may have somebody who's just not gonna, just not gonna talk with you or who may, you know, so I, I, I think we've gotta have that ability and that's why I changed that.
And I agree with that. The, the problem that I've run into is, I mean, I've, I've probably gone to a dozen homes and I'm telling them one thing and then whenever, I'm telling them what's on the memo or showing them the memo and then it comes back that we've changed that, which is fine and I agree with what you're saying. But that's why I'm saying, can we get a subsequent memorandum that shows exactly what we are changing so that we can provide that for people?
I would like to make sure that we are making every effort not have to put them on there.
We are being instructed to, so, um, if they're not, they should be and they need to be.
Well, in many cases, if I was an adjoining property owner and I had been frustrated over months or years of nothing, I'd at least like to know my city is trying and if the only thing that way I can tell is with a note on the door, at least it shows me there's an opportunity that we are trying.
But we need to, we need to give you all the, the current, because I, I know you get phone calls, you get questions, just as I do. Ninety percent of the calls I get, well, probably eighty percent have to do with this, with code enforcement. So, uh, we need to, we need to have the right information out there and everybody be on the same page, so we'll be glad to do that. Any other comments from council? I've got one thing, I just wanna give you a heads up. I started bringing it up when Roy was here. We're going to be coming to you within the next few weeks, two weeks, uh, to get on committee, uh, appropriation to hire a construction management firm, to go through that process of hiring a construction management firm, getting them on board for this criminal justice building. Uh, we want the, we want the CM in place early in the process. I'll probably ask one of y'all, Rick got to do the, the, uh, architecture, uh, firm, so, so I'll, I'll probably ask to engage, uh, a different councilman, but I want a council, council person involved, uh, in that. Uh, but, but we're going to be bringing that forward to a committee, uh, probably within a couple of weeks to, uh, to ask for, uh, and we'll have a, we'll have a price by then about what we would expect it would cost to go ahead and engage a construction management firm for phase one of this project. Their phase two will be there also, but we'll only incur costs for the phase one for the preliminary design.
But phase one is just for the design, is it not?
That's right. We would have to be paying for the construction, construction management.
But why would we need a construction manager for phase one for the design?
Because the earlier you get a construction management firm in place, and Roy mentioned that tonight, uh, the better, the better handle you're gonna have on costs, even in the preliminary design. We don't want them to draw something we can't build and we wanna be sure what's drawn.
That's why you put it out for bid, to see if it's possible.
I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you what I believe is, uh, is, is the best course of action and I believe it's probably where we stubbed our toe a time or two, well, one time before.
I think a good construction manager can help in that design a lot because, because they are very good at recommending things that don't need to be there or do need to be in place.
That's why you hired an architect.
They do.
I'm sorry, architects don't always get it right.
No, construction management...
Maybe you hired the wrong architect.
Construction management needs to be involved early on and I hope if y'all don't believe that, you will do some research because it will, it will help us in the long run contain cost.
I, I know that.
Okay.
I'd like a quick, Turnbow Park is looking awesome. Even if all the water that's gone through there was over there for a while Saturday, it really looks good if you've got a chance to walk over there, especially since the fence was down, you could see in there without risking anything. Does look good.
Yeah, does look good.
It's gonna be done Monday?
Drop dead by August sometime.
I thought we were looking at July fourth.
With the rain delays and we pulled their crew off to help with the trail to get ready for square to square.
For a few days.
Their, their completion date is June the twenty-fifth, so we are looking at an opening on the Fourth of July, is what we're, we're thinking. So unless there's some big rain delays between now and then, it does look good.
It does.
It looks like it's supposed to. They done a great job. You just couldn't ask for better quality. They're cutting out the rest of the box, Culver, they haven't been over there. There's, there's some more of it open up.
It looks good.
It's gonna work, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks everybody. Uh, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
I have.
Readjourn, thank you.